Good afternoon and welcome to the ninth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. If you're appearing today before the commission, please introduce yourself, your client, and spell your names. And if you're here to protest before the commission, please come forward. Introduce yourself, spell your name, and be sworn in by Assistant Administrator Arak. Commissioners, I see we have a request to add on.
Uh yes Chair, motion to add on Agenda Item twenty eight. Request number one nine dash one five zero five zero from Aloha Pretoria, second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Request to add on Agenda Item number twenty eight is approved. Moving into the public hearing, calling application Agenda Item number one, application number one eight dash one three nine one three from K S L R L M L L C, Mr. Uyota.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Ms. Uriah, Robert Uyota, on behalf of K S L R L M LLC, Voyager forty seven. Present to my right, Mr. Revell Noonan. He is the General Manager, first name R E V E L L, last name N N E W T O N. At this time, we have nothing to add in this case's report.
Thank you, Ms. Uriah.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters of support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application for the Record Day summary of the July fifth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioners Min and Lee prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one eight dash one three nine one three, second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, application number one eight dash one three nine one three is approved.
Thank you so much.
Then moving agenda item number two, application number one eight dash one three nine two five from I E S Retail LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Suzuki on behalf of the applicant, I have with me Sandra Hughes. Sandra H I U, the retail manager for I E S Retail.
Thank you, Ms. Uriah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters of support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the Record Day summary of the July fifth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioners Min and Lee prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one eight dash one three nine two five, second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote agenda item number two, application number one eight dash one three nine two five is approved.
Thank you very much.
Calling Agenda Item number three, application number one eight dash one four zero zero seven from Kati Foods Pizza Hawaii, Mr. Zebakalam.
Aloha Chair, Members of the Commission, Emmanuel Zebakalam on behalf of Kati Foods Pizza Hawaii. Um I can answer any questions you have.
Ms. Uriah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. In this instance, the applicant failed to meet compliance with HRS Section two eighty one fifty seven C. Accordingly, Administration will ask the commission to cancel the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to cancel the public hearing for application number one eight dash one four zero zero seven, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote agenda item number three, application number one eight dash one four zero zero seven is canceled. Calling Agenda Item.
Thank you.
Item R. Nineteen, one of you there, Mr. Zebakalam? Uh this is a request. Request number one nine dash one five zero three seven from Kati Foods Pizza Hawaii, I N C, Mr. Zebakalam.
Aloha Chair, Members of the Commission, Emmanuel Zebakalam here on behalf of Kati Foods Pizza Hawaii. Um we're requesting for the use of the previously submitted documents for special license applications and to submit a long-term special license application. I can answer any questions you have. It's got hot light, it's me, it's probably me.
She protecting your pockets and your your court uh coat tails? Mission of leave, you're not touching.
It's perfect as long as we don't talk about business.
Mr. Zebakalam, um can you um um start for the record that none of these applicants have committed a crime in the since they've been fingerprinted or?
Yes.
By the commission? Yes, you can.
Yes.
And how long ago were these documents submitted?
Um these documents were submitted with the current license application, which went in approximately five to six months ago.
So within the last, thank you.
Motion to approve request number one nine dash one five zero three seven, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote agenda item number nineteen, request number one nine dash one five zero three seven is approved.
Thank you.
Let's go back to the public hearing, calling Agenda Item number four, application number one eight dash one four one four three from Nextwave Hospitality LLC. Miss Cole.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole on behalf of the applicant. Present to my right is Honor Nicholas Priolletti, spelled P R I O L E T T I. Also have Mr. Benson Kim on my left. Um let's go ahead and cancel public hearing for today and we set it for October twenty fifth. Um Mr. Benson Kim had fail he made a mistake and failed to send out mailing notices. So he'd like to send it out tomorrow and then schedule the public hearing for October twenty fifth.
Thank you for that, Ms. Uriah.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Uh yes, to confirm, applicant did fail to meet compliance with HRS Section two eighty one fifty seven C. Accordingly, we would ask the commission to cancel the public hearings.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Okay, seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to cancel public hearing for application number one eight dash one four one four three and reschedule public hearing to October twenty fifth, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote agenda item number four, application number one eight dash one four one four three. Public hearing is canceled and it will be continued. This matter will be continued to October twenty sixth, is that correct? Two thousand and eighteen, thank you, Ms. Uriah. Moving into the preliminary hearing, agenda number five, transfer application number one eight dash one three two one five from You Know The Drill LLC. Mr. Wood.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. To my right is Christina Sargent, she's a member of the applicant LLC. With a record reflect Wayne Lucas Council, we have no changes to the investigative.
Thank you very much, Commissioners?
Uh motion to approve transfer application number one eight dash one three two one five, second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote agenda item number five, transfer application number one eight dash one three two one five is approved. Calling Agenda Item number six.
Thank you.
Application number one eight dash one four two four eight from G K Hawaii Restaurants Inc. Mr. Nakashima, Ms. Melch.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Co-Chair, and Commissioners, Robin Melch on behalf of the applicant J K J K G K Hawaiian Restaurants Inc. And to my right is Rick Nakashima, the Vice President. We have reviewed the report and there are no amendments or changes.
Thank you very much, Melch, we uh Commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve application number one eight dash one four two four eight, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote agenda item number six, application number one eight dash one four two four eight is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coming. Calling Agenda Item number seven, application number one eight dash one four four eight one from Masal Property Incorporated. Masal Property Incorporated, Mr. Luke.
To my right is the President Nicholas Wong, he's President with Council, Wayne Luke. We have no changes in investigative report.
Thank you, Commissioners?
One more question. Um Mr. Wong, where specifically in Porridge is this location located?
Okay, uptown.
Okay.
So if you go uptown by Starbucks, you know where that is? You're at Holiday Earths uptown, there's like a butterfly exhibit?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so like to the side of that.
Near the near the mini stage, I mean there's a staging area in the middle.
Yeah, there's staging.
Yeah, near that, but more toward the.
Towards the jewelry shop and hobby store, that side?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Um it's explained as an enclosed kiosk, twenty by twenty.
Yes.
Okay, so are you gonna be serving food in that kiosk?
Uh snacks.
Snacks. It it says it's enclosed, but how are you, how is it enclosed to the traffic and the um teenagers and kids there?
Uh so um permanent fence around the perimeter of that area. Um one one entrance um controlled. I mean it's it's you can visibly see the whole thing sitting anywhere.
And so there's not gonna there even have a main entrance door, everything like that?
Yeah.
I mean normally when I think of kiosk, I think of an open area.
Yeah.
Right, chairs and stuff like that, right there. Okay, um. Small area.
And since Mr. Luke actually has another client who does this, um so is it similar to like what they have at the airport? Where it's like a small bar and then some little stick around
Yeah, I always say so, yeah, 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 yeah.
and then there's usually stanchions or something to cover it off?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Or or like half wall kind of thing, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
One more question. The I know that the bathrooms are common. You're instructing, what is your procedure on when they leave to go to the restaurant?
Um give all the drinks there, um.
Give the drinks within the kiosk.
Yeah. Yeah, they're not allowed to take everything out. They were gonna assign so do not go, not you can't go beyond this point.
And you know, I understand this is gonna be a bar, I see you're for like for later. You're obviously gonna have a bartender, right, behind?
Yes.
Um along the same lines as what Commissioner Donapon was asking. How are you gonna enforce, you know, to because you don't have walls? So you know, how are you gonna keep people just picking up their drink and going? Or you know, are you guys gonna have managers in the front? How are you gonna be controlling them?
Yes, it's not the staff too, but I mean a lot of it just falls upon us training our staff that they like, you guys wanna keep the drinks inside. You know, it it's it's privy to us to ensure that they're not getting out just because it's gonna just first cause them all mad and then to get mad at us and to all the reason to get upset at us too. So it's just it's just, yeah, it's just we gotta stay vigilant and make sure that we just keep it keep it in fence.
Mr. Wong, along the lines of my fellow Commissioners, um do you by chance have a photograph that might depict side view of this kiosk?
Sorry?
Do you by chance have a photograph or maybe a drawing depicting the side view of the kiosk?
No, we do not mention it.
Yeah, I think your drawing would be a little inaccurate because there's no stairs there, that's an escalator there, right?
Yes, but there's also stairs going down, so.
There's stairs going down?
Yes, I guess there's a meaning it's not under there.
Oh really?
Yeah.
I I if like I said, it's just it's near the the center stage. I mean like, you know, that's the only concern that I have. I know that, you know, in fact, two weeks ago, they just was doing um they do all the kid activities there. They have the train that goes through for the kids. They got stuff, like a lot of family stuff in the middle part of that and it's a very busy area.
Yes.
So that's the only concern that I have is your challenge is to keep everything confined into that twenty by twenty space and making sure that there's not a lot of traffic of minors or stuff coming in and out.
Yeah, I mean uh kinda hard to set up for that underneath the escalator is where the the activity, the children activities really happen. That side's really gonna be blocked, that's kinda where we're gonna put our staff office too, I guess you could say, or like in our back room. Um so you can't physically get to that side.
Oh, that's okay.
But the rest, yeah, the rest of it's gonna be that that fencing.
Okay, that explains that. But I was thinking of that area coming right under.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And um you know, I have a fourteen year old daughter, so that's the main place there because Starbucks is right there.
Yeah, yeah.
So she meets me there in the middle, so now I'm thinking.
Gotta go on the other side now.
Okay, well, thank you for explaining, I feel a lot better now, all right?
I think in the also in the next, um you are gonna go for a public hearing. You could provide us additional information on what you plan, what your fencing material is and what's gonna happen there.
Yeah.
That would be appreciated.
Yeah, um I'll but but next time, hopefully there a little bit farther along construction, we can take some pictures for you.
Okay, that'd be great.
And if I'm not mistaken, the only reason why I ask this is at at the other face, it says coming soon and has the blue hub over there too. Like there's, you know, on the other face where the old fun factory used to be.
Yes.
They boarded it up and they have new attractions coming and they are announcing all the restaurants and everything. And if I'm not mistaken, your establishment is on there, so I was hoping it wasn't gonna be there by the moment.
No.
Oh no, that's my uncle's.
Yeah, yeah, but then there's a there's a publication there too, so that's why.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
And some more publicity.
That's good.
That's where that's where uncle's at the Korean restaurant.
Yeah, so I was a little concerned about that much stuff happening there, especially with the movies in there and the kids are always over there, so.
Yeah. It's on the. It's it's on the other side.
Okay, very good.
By the way, um we have a train at the middle of that, actually.
Look at that.
Look at there, would you, this is number two location. Okay, uh motion to approve application number one eight dash one four four eight one, second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote agenda item number seven, application number one eight dash one four four eight one is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item number eight, application number one eight dash one four five four zero from Bayou Banquet Hall.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, you know, Obsiana on behalf of the licensee seated to my right is Jola.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, uh seated to my right is Jonas Susa, member of the licensee, or the applicant, I'm sorry. Um we do have one change to investigative report on page three, uh hours of operation. It says eleven AM to one AM daily. Uh we'd like to change that to from a to eleven AM to two AM daily. Although the like the applicant will be stopping service well before that time in order to ensure all containers are collected before the two PM uh two AM deadline. Um also, on the bottom of that page, it does say applicant must submit executed lease. Um the executed lease was provided in the initial application materials.
All right, uh motion to approve application number eighteen dash one four five four zero with the amended the changes of operation hours daily from eleven o'clock AM to to two o'clock AM, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote agenda item number eight, application number one eight dash one four five four zero is approved with the normal business hours from eleven AM to two AM.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, good luck. Calling Agenda Item number nine, Commissioner Lee.
Yes, Chair, due to a possible conflict with the this agenda item, I'm gonna have to recuse myself.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole.
Ms. May, I'll call the agenda.
Of course.
Thank you. Calling Agenda Item number nine, application number one eight dash one four five six seven from Sebula Hawaii LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole on behalf of the applicant. Present to my left is authorized agent William Chase, spelled C H A E. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you very much, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one eight dash one four five six seven, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, application number one eight dash one four five six seven is approved. Thank you very much, can we have Commissioner Lee back, please? Calling Agenda Item number ten, application number one eight dash one four five nine four from Mawana Inspiration LLC.
Mr. Chairman, to my left is Ching. It's pronounced Ching, although spelled Q I N G. Her last name is Lynn. She's a member of the African Corporation. Uh we have no changes, uh Wayne Luke is representing the African.
Thank you very much, Commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve application number one eight dash one four five nine four, second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote agenda item number ten, application number one eight dash one four five nine four is approved.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item number eleven, application number one nine dash one four nine two two from Hilton Hawaiian Village. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners, Avery Marcher on behalf of Hilton Hawaiian Village, L S P L L C. With me is Jeffrey Yelvin, Y E D L I N, Regional Director of Food and Beverage.
Thank you very much, Commissioners? Put that in your motion, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve application number one nine one four nine two two with a following provision to be dated back to approved dated back to twelve oh one AM effective eight twenty nineteen.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one four nine two two is approved effective twelve oh one AM on eight twenty nine eighteen.
Thank you.
Ms. Uriah, is that correct?
That's it, eight thirty.
It's eight thirty?
Yeah.
I'll amend my motion to eight thirty twenty eighteen.
It's today at one minute or one second after midnight.
Thank you very much.
I know you hasn't served any alcohol in this, right? Calling Agenda Item number twelve, application number one nine dash one four seven eight one from E K C U S A.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Chair Ferguson, feature. Uh my name is June Kay.
Please have a seat, thank you very much, welcome.
And I represent E K C U S A doing business as a cousin, a bar and grill. And we also have the manager here, Mr. Mabori Takimori. And one notation on the investigative report. In addition to the actual stocks, there were a capital account that was also moved. A stock were never issued for these capital accounts, but there were forty nine percent was made. So in addition to stock, there capital stocks uh account that was.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Could you explain what that means to transfer capital?
Yes, uh if you have a capital account, usually stocks are issued. But however, in this case, uh stock was never issued for whatever reason. So when they did the assignment, they uh the it's it's reflected in the assignment of stocks. It says that three hundred forty three stocks in addition to capital uh account were from uh two hun- two hundred sixty four thousand or some somewhere along the line is also transferred in addition to the stocks. So that's reflected in the assignment of stocks. So so it's 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 still a bit uh it's just a stock or never issued and sometimes these things happen, they happen. So what we did was we moved the uh account account from one account.
Very good, Commissioners, do you have any other questions or type of action?
Okay, motion to approve um stock transfer application number one nine dash one four seven eight one, second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote agenda item number twelve, application number one nine dash one four seven eight one is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for that lesson in the stock pocket. Calling Agenda Item number thirteen is a request, request number one eight dash one three five zero zero from Paradise Ciders LLC.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners.
My name is Sean Peck from Paradise Ciders, alongside me is Casey Solheim.
Thank you very much, Commissioners?
Yes, Chair, I have a quick question. Um in the investigative report, it notes a common stairs leading to a mezzanine on the outside. The term common, is that shared with another tenant or could you explain that situation?
Yes, it is shared with another tenant. Uh we in part of the building, there's also another company that operates. Um the upstairs, we do not use mezzanine at all. Um but it is common space for both of us to be able to use for storage.
So the mezzanine is pretty storage?
Yeah, it's just storage, yeah.
Okay, another tenant wanted to use that. So it's a co it's a shared storage space that if another tenant wanted to put their things out there, they would have to come through your space? And they're authorized to do that?
Um yeah, the way that our lease is, we sublease from the the company that we share the building with. And so there's just two companies, us and another one. We both use the stairway to to store some just whatever materials we need for for our businesses up there. It's a really low traffic area, there's no employees that work up there, anything, it's strictly storage.
Well, let me ask you this question. Is there any alcohol being stored in the mezzanine?
No.
Definitely not.
None at all.
And to clarify for the record, this is for a manufacturer wine license, correct?
Yes.
And so you won't be serving anything, we don't have to worry about any patrons going into that area, correct?
There won't be any patrons going in that area. Um we would like to request the ability to do tastings to the public at our location.
Okay, we can talk about that later, but this is for manufacturer's license, so we're gonna not gonna have any alcohol in a unlicensed area, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Correct, yeah.
So it's our clarification. Uh on their current floor plan, the license that it previously previously had, um the shipping receiving area, that wasn't part of your license, correct?
Correct. Yep, it was just a small room in the back corner was all that we were permitted for.
But currently, there is a little discrepancy. We have the the stairs wasn't shown on the previous. I I know it wasn't part of your license space, but.
It it was requested by our investigator to have the stairs drawn in on this floor plan.
Okay, because it's gonna be part of your license. Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, good. Uh motion to approve request number one eight dash one three five zero zero. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I agenda item number thirteen, request number one eight dash one three five zero zero is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good night, guys.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number fourteen, request number one nine dash one four nine seven two from El Tris Brew of New York's L T V.
Alright, we're gonna try this side again.
Did you empty your pockets, Mr. Zabaque?
Yeah, I emptied my pockets back there.
Very well.
Uh Emmanuel Zabaqualam on behalf of El Tris Brews Limited, uh D B A Shay. And to my right is Kehau Desche, the uh an owner, an operator. Uh I can answer any questions you may have or provide a statement at the Commissioner's request.
Mr. Zabaqualam, why don't you go over your request and give your point?
Sure. Um so what we're trying to do is open two hours earlier to facilitate um basically the sports games that happen during season. Um a primary use, I mean the the two primary uh modes of I guess revenue that we receive are going to be from the after hours uh industry crowd that comes and then when we do sports events in the morning. Um so the sports events often start earlier than the ten o'clock time that's allowed under our license. Uh the games will start much earlier, which we are currently open um to allow patrons in. We do serve a buffet. Um we're just hoping to extend them the ability to have a a a beer or a Bloody Mary uh with that during the game if they'd like.
Football season, though.
Football season.
Kickoff seven thirty five PM.
Yeah.
It's Saturday night.
First game, first game, second game.
Seven thirty, eight o'clock, right.
And Sunday night football.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
How many patrons are there for all three games?
In the morning, probably sixty maybe, between forty and sixty, it depends who's playing.
Let me re- let me rephrase my question. How many of the same patrons catch all three games?
Um it varies. Um let me see.
Well, my concern is that's a long time to be in a liquor establishment watching football.
This is. But most far as that, hey, all the bars starts at two, six o'clock, right? Yeah.
Correct.
So. So what we generally do, I'm sorry, good job. Good, good. Um you know, we we do our best to monitor and make sure that everyone is consuming alcohol at an appropriate rate. Um we do serve breakfast. Uh I'm sorry, it's a buffet and it is mandatory, so it's not like people are gonna just be drinking without eating. Uh they will be enjoying the occasional beverage with their meal while watching the game. Um so uh you know, we're hoping to have these extra couple hours uh to allow this service to our patrons. Um and as well as compete with the other bars that that open early for the sports events.
Mr. Zabaqualam, do you um state in your request that there will be a break in service to allow for four hours of no service?
Uh so uh what we were trying to give an example of was that other licenses, other classes um have a break that is two hours shorter from the time that they end service at night to the time that they're allowed to open in the morning. Um so with our classification, these two hours would put us in the same category as them in regards to the break of service between when we end and when we would open service.
Motion to convene into executive session. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote I, we are now in executive session. Thank you. Uh we are now back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action?
Yes, Chair. Uh my motion is to a- approve agenda item number fourteen, request number one nine dash one four nine seven two. Um it'll be subject to a six month trial period. And we are also gonna have a we're we are also gonna have a three month review.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number fourteen, request number one nine dash one four nine seven two is approved with the following conditions as mentioned in Vice Chair Gana Hone's motion.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Good luck. Calling agenda item number fifteen, request number one nine dash one four nine nine zero from I R E M LLC.
Good afternoon, Chairman Commissioners.
My name is Ricky Kobayashi. I'm a general partner of I R E M LLC and to my right is Masaki Sasada. He's an authorized agent.
Thank you very much. Commissioner?
Uh motion to approve request number one nine dash one four nine nine zero for thirty one days from October first to October thirty first twenty eighteen. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number fifteen, request number one nine dash one four nine nine zero is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number sixteen, request number one nine dash one five zero two five from Murphy's Bar. Mr. Murphy.
Good afternoon, Chairman Commissioners, Mr. Rai, Don Murphy, Murphy's Bar and Grill. I have no changes in the investigative report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Uh motion to approve request number one nine dash one five zero two five. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number sixteen, request number one nine dash one five zero two five is approved. Mr. Murphy, thank you very much for complying with the request of the neighborhood board of the ten PM. We appreciate it.
Thank you, you bet.
Calling agenda item number seventeen, request number one nine dash one five zero three eight from Green Clover Corporation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. This is actually not a modification. This is an existing uh obligation. Gross liquor sales came in at thirteen eighty five sixty three. We've already got a payment plan uh with the commission. We paid three thousand dollars of the three three thousand seventy three seventy. So we're just taxing on the uh additional amounts to a payment plan.
Uh Ms. Rai, would you clarify please?
I'm not uh.
You threw the curveball at us, Mr. Kiuchi.
So what I what uh okay, hold on, let's bring it back up. Um I guess what I reported in the hearing file is that you're requesting approval to pay the F Y eighteen gross liquor sales additional fee in two installments on September uh twenty fifth and October twenty fifth.
Right.
And to combine the seventy three dollar and seventy balance owing on a previous payment plan with the September twenty five check.
That's correct. That's absolutely correct.
So explain to me why you why you're including that? I I we understand you're gonna pay it, but why you why are you requesting to approve that?
Well, because Green Clover Corporation is no longer business. The license died June thirty. And this is part of the settlement we were getting from the guys that kind of did wrong by my client. So we're using settlement to pay the gross, what we owe the commission.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Uh motion to approve request number one nine dash one five zero three eight. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number seventeen, request number one nine dash one five zero three eight is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiuchi. Calling agenda item number eighteen, request number one nine dash one four nine nine seven from David K Ishikawa.
Um uh in your uh hearings uh folder, there's a letter from uh Kobayashi Sukina Ngoda requesting withdrawal of this particular matter.
Okay, Commissioners, I see it right here. Uh can we have a motion?
Motion to withdraw agenda item number eighteen. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number eighteen, request number one nine dash one four nine nine seven is approved. Following agenda item number twenty. Change thing?
Now this number twenty is the uh host event report for for Oahu Nui.
No. Plus in.
Yes, dear.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Anthony Suwitsubu for for Oahu Nui. With me today is Ju Noole, one of the directors.
Good afternoon. Commissioners, do you have uh any question? If not, I have a quick question. Okay, uh I don't see the committee here. Mr. Ho is not here.
Not here.
So what was the net sales?
Uh we provided the.
Do I do I have that information here?
In in our August twenty seventh letter. We provided the gross liquor sales of whole piece.
How did they go?
It went well. Uh obviously, we hoped that a few more people were going to attend, but there were no incidents.
Okay, so looking at this, um looking at your letter here. What was, I'm assuming that your organization in this Nui received?
No, they received six thousand.
Six thousand, that was uh agreed upon?
That was the minimum agreed upon.
That was the minimum, I think.
Yes.
So the, Ms. Rai, no action is required on this?
No, no action.
No action. Thank you very much. I'm sorry it wasn't such a six uh more successful event because you have an excellent nonprofit. We appreciate you working with the place on IPO off the site. Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty eight. Add on.
I added. Okay, so calling agenda item number twenty eight, request number one nine dash one five zero five zero from the Lower Petroleum L T V. Commissioner?
No, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Robert Feng, Secretary and General Counsel for our applicant, Allo Petroleum.
All choice.
We have no changes or corrections to the investigative report.
Commissioner. Commissioner Lee?
It's a door, actually, please.
Get one with that?
Motion.
These these are all typical, right?
Yes, okay. Motion to approve um agenda item number twenty eight. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number twenty eight.
Thank you. Chair.
Yes.
Uh motion for the adoption of decision in order for agenda items twenty one through thirty inclusive. Is a finding. Twenty one is. Oh, I'm sorry. I revised my motion. Um motion for the adoption of findings of theft and decision in order for agenda items twenty one to thirty inclusive. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number twenty one to thirty inclusive. Moving into adjudication. Good afternoon.
Uh good afternoon, Commissioners, Ms. Rai. Uh Joy Neely, Deputy Corporation Counsel, here for the prosecution for adjudication items thirty one through fifty two on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number thirty one.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee waiving the charge in her plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number thirty one, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is this is a first violation. I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Mr. Kiuchi?
Um my client apologizes for not having the records. He did talk to auditors saying uh worked it out. We're gonna talk to him about keep keeping better records in the future.
Okay, well maybe this will encourage him. Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number thirty one, recommended fine of five hundred dollars is accepted.
Thank you.
On agenda item number thirty two, Star Sports Bar.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh my name is Robert Lee. I'm CPA and authorized agent for uh Choice Cafe or T D D B A Star Sports Bar.
Um the charges honor during the fiscal year ending June thirtieth twenty seventeen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii's licensee failed to accurately report its revenues from gross liquor sales or to properly complete the gross liquor sales report in violation of rule three eighty one seventeen point five six of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Would you like to plead, sir?
Uh plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number thirty two, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first violation. I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
So any comment?
Uh no comment. What's happened during the uh rail construction, so.
Uh.
Ms. Neely, what what is the actual basis of the inaccuracy in reporting?
Um apparently uh cash register closing tapes were not accurate because employees were not using correct department keys to record sales.
Miss Neely, how does that impact the bike construction?
Yes, during the uh rail construction, the the sale dropped to more than fifty percent. And the closed place for a long period of time, long period of time. So uh kind of uh record was messed up. So I started coming in and tried to help them too.
Are you personally doing the books and records for the?
I am, yeah, helping them too.
Can you proceed as soon as possible?
Um they 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 getting better now, yes. Because uh and then uh we try to uh uh set up uh our new quick systems for them to follow and then we designed some forms to then follow, so. They following now.
Thank you.
Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number thirty two, recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Following agenda item number thirty three, Chili's Grill and Bar.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Anderson, B R Y A N A N D E R S O N.
The charges honor during the fiscal year ending June thirtieth twenty seventeen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii's licensee failed to accurately report its revenues from gross liquor sales or to properly complete the gross liquor sales report in violation of rule three dash eighty one dash seventeen point five six of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Would you like to plead?
I have no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty three, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first violation, I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
Mr. Anderson, what happened?
We have a uh uh third party vendor that does all of our accounting. It's at a implosive got a uh Wichita, Kansas, and they failed to uh uh pull all twelve months, they pulled seven months, and it's a big error and but to to rectify that, they uh uh February twelfth, two thousand eighteen uh did all the uh things for the audit. And then we did amended the declaration gross liquor sales, did a spreadsheet with tabs, uh sales revised, liquor purchases beginning and ending inventories, assessment fees and put systems in place so that won't happen again. It's a five months, you know, that was pretty pretty big error, so.
Well, for a for a um for some place like Chili's, yeah, that's a lot of sales that's missing.
Absolutely. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
By the way, Mr. Anderson, he has fine local county fines over here. He's more than happy to go to your national chain.
Yeah. I agree.
Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty three, uh the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Local jobs for local people. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number thirty four, Pandora's Cafe, Arayoke Bar and Grill.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mark Green, authorized representative for Pandora Cafe. To my left is Lynn Agno, H E N O, who is an officer in the corporation.
Do you waive reading of the charge?
Waive the reading.
Yes.
How would you like to plead?
I no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty four, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first violation, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Sir, what happened?
Uh well, they we continued the accounting from the previous owner from the year before, and apparently there were errors that we picked up and we weren't aware of, and therefore we under we didn't under report income, but we under reported our actually liquor purchases, but the actual income, it got reported as other other income. There were add-ons into it on the P O S system, but we've corrected all those errors.
Thank you. Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty four, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On agenda item number thirty five, Collection Wine and Bar.
Good afternoon, Altone here, A L T O N E H I A, Authority Agent for Collection Wine and Bar. To the right of me, Toru Yamamoto.
Uh the charges honor about August thirty one, twenty seventeen and or during the period from August thirty first, twenty seventeen to September twenty first, twenty seventeen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to submit the name of every person then employed on the licensed premises who is registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission in violation of rule three eighty two thirty eight point eight of the rules of the liquor commission of the ca- city and county of Honolulu.
How would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty five, the no contest plea is approved.
Uh this is a first violation and I recommend a penalty of two hundred fifty dollars.
Mr. Iya, what happened?
I built it in and didn't come here. That's all I can say.
Right, well then you might be happy to hear that we're moving towards new electronic submissions. Alright, and have you guys made any uh you gonna correct any pictures? Do you know our address?
This is when I handed it in myself.
Great. Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, um agenda item number thirty five, the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On agenda, item number thirty six, Pa'ap La'ap Kai Mini Mart L O C, is that correct, Ms. Min?
That is very correct.
Thank you so much.
Okay, um this licensee was served, the owner was served, uh however, I've been unable to contact licensee after news tries. So um I'd like to, oh.
Can can you describe the service?
Uh the service was um a certified copy was delivered to Chris Sakai, the owner, on um August, looks like fifteenth.
And someone did sign?
The owner did. So I I would, yeah, I'd like to move for default judgment. Um of uh this five hundred dollars.
Uh motion to approve a default judgment of five hundred dollars. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty six, default judgment, the amount of five hundred dollars is approved. Calling uh agenda item number thirty seven, to Sup Kada, Mojor Mawu Sushi.
Um licensee has requested to continue this hearing to uh next week, September sixth, and I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty seven to September sixth, two thousand eighteen. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty seven is continued to September sixth, two thousand eighteen. On agenda item number thirty eight, D F D F S H I K, please.
To my to my right is Austin Tominaga. He is the airport manager for Duty Free. We're the direct reflect waiting council. We waive really other charges and to a plea of no contest.
Motion to approve the no contest, please. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty eight, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first violation and I recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
Uh basically, uh Mr. Tominaga followed the hard way. He is familiar with the filing notice when you make changes. So in this particular instance, if they filed a request with the liquor commission for the for the license premises here for a sales area, a change in sales area. But when they did that, they found out that changes had already been made, you know, prior to that time, and that's why I get those in finally.
Okay, so my concern is now is the floor plan that we, the commission, have on file, has it been approved and is it accurate to what is actually on premises right now?
Yes, including the extension.
I'm observing from the record that the floor plan we have on file right now matches your your license premises right now.
Yes.
Okay, because this is increase in floor space and changes to interior fixtures, lighting, floor, storage space and doors.
Yes, the commission has already hacked it and approved that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to.
Yeah.
Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty eight, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On agenda item number thirty nine, U N's crucial. Mr. Yuan?
Good afternoon, my name is Bradford Yuan, I'm an officer of the corporation.
Um honor about September eighth, twenty seventeen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to immediately prevent or suppress any violent, quarrelsome, disorderly, lewd and immoral or unlawful conduct of any person on the licensed premises to wit possession of gambling devices and promoting gambling in violation of section two eighty one dash seventy eight B six of the Hawaii Vice Statutes.
Mr. Yuan, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty nine, the no contest plea is accepted.
Uh this is a first violation, but there were six potable machines found uh during a HPD play bus operation. Um I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
Mr. Yuan, this is a serious violation.
Pardon?
This is a serious violation.
While the vendor who's mis- who's put the machines in assured me that these machines were not deemed illegal by the cour- uh court. They were not gambling devices. You know, and and I look around, there's a lot of these machines all over the state in these gaming rooms.
That's not what we're talking about right now. We're talking about your licensed establishment.
Right.
And um even if a a
gaming or a device is not illegal, it still needs to, you still need to get prior approval from the liquor commission in order to use it.
I thought it uh.
That's all in the rule book.
Yes, I at one time I used to own a bar, I thought it was just for uh dispensing liquor dispenser, not for retail general. I didn't realize that.
So Mr. Yuan, I just have a question for you. Are you actively involved in that, in your store?
Pardon? Yes, I still go down and close up.
You still go down and close up, but you don't observe, you have different cashiers working for you?
Yes.
Family members, correct?
Uh no, we hire, we hire two, we have two people working.
Alright, so do you realize that there are people in there playing your machines? And they being paid cash for credits on their machines?
Well, apparently they were they were doing that.
That's gambling.
Yes.
That's that's against the rules of the regulations. Were you aware of that?
Uh now I am aware of it.
At the at the time, you were not aware?
No, at that, before that, I used to go down, collect the cash, and when I just used to put vending machine profits.
Correct.
You know, in vending machine that we pay taxes on on the vending machines.
So, Mr. Yuan, a lot of cash, huh?
Pardon?
A lot of cash, huh?
Not that much.
Not that much. Thank you.
Um where are these machines now?
Pardon?
Where are them gaming machines now?
They're not my machines, the vendor took it out.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Yuan, you have anything else at your store that that is not approved by the liquor commission?
We have a.
You have a dartboard, you have anything else of that?
As far as I know, we have a card machine, but it's not a gambling machine because it's a phone card machine that it gives you the odds of winning, odds of losing or whatever, but you have a fifteen minute. You know, when you buy the card, you have a fifteen minute uh free call on any uh public phone. And I don't know if uh, as far as I know, the vendor that put that in said it's legal in California.
Where in Hawaii?
So I I think I think our uh enforcement division will um uh make a visit to your establishment and if it's found not to be legal, then we will see you back here again.
Mr. Yuan, um.
Pardon?
I'm gonna make this speech again. There seems to be a disconnect with you and your business.
Well, yeah, cause I'm I'm on the elderly side, I just trying to keep the business float for the people that works there.
Is there anybody that you entrust that can see the day-to-day operations and advise you that these these activities?
Well, I can uh, well, I'm this one manager that works now, I can I can trust.
Um motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty nine, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
I would say don't take the vendor's word for it. They're trying to make money off of you, Mr. Yuan.
Pardon?
Don't take the vendor's word for it. Come and call or come check with the commission if it's okay, because I think they're trying to
Well, yeah.
be cool you like.
Well, it's a fifty fifty split or what, you know.
Wow, they're trying to make money off of you, Mr. Yuan.
You know, well.
Come, don't trust what they say. Come and ask the commission if somebody comes to you and wants to sell you a device, okay? Cause we don't wanna see you in here.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Yuan, we're not in our el- elderly stage, we're in our experience, we're in our experience stage.
I'll probably just. I'll just probably close up and just get rid of the business.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Agenda item number forty.
If the representative for number forty had to step out, so we can either recess or wait till the person returns or go on to forty one.
Uh what is your pleasure, Commissioners? Yep. Calling agenda item number forty one, Wingstop. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon Commissioners. My name is John Savage, J O L I N, S A V A G E. Uh I plead no contest and I waive the right for the reading of the charge.
Motion to accept the no contest, please. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty one, the no contest plea is accepted.
Uh this is actually uh a third violation, there were two previous violations in twenty sixteen, so the recommended penalty is one thousand dollars.
Sir, what's going on?
Um we, if you're familiar with Wingstop, we we have beer, we have refrigerator, we've had uh we had issues with staffing and uh at times people calling in sick, no call, no show, managers uh and and other blue card employees, so we've we have expanded that now, we have seven blue card employees. Previous to that, we had at any one time three or four based on employees coming and going. So that was our solution and we've had, this occurred last September, about a year, almost a year ago. We've had no issues since then, and we think that's corrected the issue.
Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty one, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
On agenda item number forty two.
Uh well, forty has returned unless you just want to have a wait until.
Calling agenda item number forty, Cafe Gangnam, Arayoke.
Yes.
My name is Jane Kim, I'm the manager of Cafe um Gangnam, Karaoke.
Okay, uh the first charge is honor about October twentieth, twenty seventeen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee employed Yo Jin Lee in that section of the licensed premises where liquor is sold, served or consumed without said employee being properly registered with the liquor commission in violation of rule three eighty two thirty eight point five A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Can you please read charge two?
Okay, charge two, honor about October twentieth, twenty seventeen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have a time card or other adequate record showing in English the month, day, year, and time indicating A M or P M and the legal first name and surname of its employee, Yo Jin Lee, when that employee was on duty in violation of rule three eighty two thirty eight point four A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Ms. Kim, as to charge one, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please, to charge one. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty, charge number one, the no contest plea is accepted.
And as to charge two, how would you like to plead? Uh two charges, so you plead no contest to one and the second charge?
Second, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please, to charge two. Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty, charge number two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, what are your recommendations?
Uh for the first charge, it's a first violation and I recommend a penalty of three hundred fifty dollars.
As to charge two?
As to charge two, it's also a first violation and I recommend a penalty of two hundred fifty dollars.
Ms. Kim?
Yes.
Do you have any comment?
No.
And has this employee? And has this employee now been properly registered and everything is accurate?
Yes, yes. Right now she's serving.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve a rec- uh recommended fines of three hundred fifty dollars for charge one and two hundred fifty dollars for charge two for a total of six hundred dollars. Second.
Then move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number forty, charge number one, the recommended fine of three hundred fifty dollars is approved. Agenda item number forty, charge number two, the recommended fine of two hundred and four fifty dollars, excuse me, is approved for a total of six hundred dollars. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number forty one. Ace of hearts.
Good evening. Uh, this is Chica Otsubo. I am a a treasurer and secretary of uh Ace of Hearts.
Can you say your last name, ma'am?
My last name is Otsubo.
Otsubo.
O T S U B O.
On or about January twenty eighth twenty eighteen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee made physical alterations within its premises to install a window and or door in a karaoke room without the prior written approval of the liquor commission in violation of rule three eighty three sixty two A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How would you like to plead? How would you like to plead?
Uh, no, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Then move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number forty two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Uh, this is the first violation. I rec- recommend a penalty of five hundred dollars.
Ma'am, have you folks reconciled the floor plans with the commission?
Hmm, and uh so first of all, I get a license without uh putting a door out of the door and uh so I put back the original door. And the Yasu was an 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 inspector. So he told me that so the uh original door cannot see the whole uh whole uh area in a room, so I made a little door, a little window on the wall.
Okay, so do you understand why that's?
Yeah, I really understand.
Yeah, so you know that if you make alterations, you need to come and have it approved before you do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number forty two, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Okay, thank you so much.
Calling agenda item number forty three, oh, Stockholm one, Mr. Yuan.
The recent reflect Wayne Lucas counsel for the licensee. Uh, I have requested with call counsel for a continuance of one week. I did not know how long we're gonna be here today and uh he's the cook for the premises, you know.
Yeah, got it, got it.
If there was sure it's a public here, you know, he still could be here. So I I asked for the continuance and uh uh I requesting also a Mandarin uh translator.
Oh, true. The only the only thing is I don't know if we can schedule it a Mandarin trip there by next week.
Not more, you can whatever date.
Can we do next available so that we can give you time?
Sure, yeah. Any date except for September thirteenth.
Uh.
Okay.
Um, motion to continue agenda item forty three to the next available date. Second.
Then move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number forty three, um please continue to the next available date. Thank you. And Mr. Lu, on the agenda item number forty, uh, called Takeria El Ranchero LLC. Wahila, New York.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Anthony Su Su. Um, for Takeria El Ranchero, with me today is Hector Gomez, its owner. Uh, we waive the reading of the charges.
Okay, um, I just as a prelimi- preliminary matter, I will be dismissing charges two and three because they are subsequent within the first charge.
Okay. Um. Okay. So you waive reading of all charges?
Yes.
Okay. And do we need to dismiss the second and third charges before proceeding?
Yes, you do. Although I would question why number three is going, but just talking about it.
Right, sorry, sorry. Um.
Turn here.
Miss Neely, can you please um expand on your reasoning for dismissing these charges?
Uh, my understanding um uh is that the um the charge for licensing conducting business outside of their class or category is usually applied to restaurants and the other two charges, um unauthorized entertainment and uh operation of karaoke machine um is is more traditionally applied towards parks just of the way the licensing categories work and so they don't usually overlap.
Can uh Miss Wahila, would you turn it on the record or?
Yeah, I'm gonna try not to do this improperly. Um, basically, um
Uh-huh.
Uh, my understanding is that this licensee is a category one standard.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Restaurant. Therefore, a category one standard restaurant is allowed to have um karaoke machines because that's not considered live entertainment. That's not considered entertainment at all, but you have to have prior approval to have those machines, which is why I question the dismissal of number three. That you had karaoke machines, which you can have on a category one premises, but you didn't have you did not get our approval to install those before installing them. With respect to like one and two, uh because the licensee is a category one standard license, they're not allowed to have uh live entertainment on their premises, which is um so in that sense, one and two are somewhat duplicative because um having uh some form of music or entertainment would not be permitted by the uh class and cate- uh by by the category of the license. So, one?
Then move the.
Please.
Can we go into executive session?
Motion to convene into executive session. Second.
Then move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote aye. Call it executive session.
So this is not, we're not gonna give them, or they're not gonna give this, if they're not.
Turn away, okay. I'm gonna take that call. I'm gonna take that call.
Not in this, I think too.
We are now back on the official um register um point of order. Can I re- 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 agenda item? Okay, calling agenda item number forty four, Takeria El Ranchero LLC.
Um, a a request to dismiss charges um was requested by the prosecutor and we're gonna deny that request and proceed with all three charges.
Oh, okay.
Um, would you like to be read the charges or do you waive reading?
Can we request a continuance just because we were we we were under the impression that um there was an agreement uh to waive certain charges and plead no contest to the others?
Uh, okay, yeah, no.
That's fair. That's fair. Uh, we can give you.
That that's fair, but I understand one thing, right? Whatever deal you make with the prosecutor in attorney does not affect this commission.
We understand.
We we have the total authority. Okay.
Yes, I'm sure.
Uh, so, um.
Continue to the next available?
Next available, please.
Okay.
Fine.
Motion to continue agenda item forty four to the next available date. Second.
Then move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number forty four is continued to the next available date. Wrong agenda item number forty five, Takeria El Ranchero LLC. Would you would you like to ask for the same?
Yes, Commissioner. Please.
Okay, five zero. Commissioners, next available?
Uh, motion to continue agenda item forty five to the next available date. Second.
Then move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number forty five is continued to the next available. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number forty six. Walgreens.
Afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This is your I, Robert Wilk, on behalf of Walgreens, Waipahu store present to my right, Mr. Damian Alvarez, he is a store manager, first name D A M I E N, last name A L V A R E Z. At this time, like to waiving the charge and just plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Then move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh I agenda item number forty six, no contest plea is accepted.
This is the first violation. I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
Mr. Wilk.
This is a compliance check case. Uh, what happened, the cashier did ask for ID, got confused about the date. Uh, she thought it said nineteen eighty eight, but of course instead it's at nineteen ninety eight. Uh, she did complete the sale. The cashier is no longer employed by Walgreens. After this incident, we did retrain all the employees. We did manager-led team meetings, discuss the policies and procedures for the sale of liquor, in particular vertical IDs, which this was. And we said it should be a red flag to employees um to when serving liquor and to prevent the sale of liquor to minors. Um, we did do, we do also do training before. All the employees were trained, but we did we did do retraining after this incident.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. Second.
Then move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number forty six, recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Thank you, thank you.
On agenda item number forty seven, Pro City Market.
Um, the licensee has requested a Korean interpreter for this hearing, so um we've I'd we'd like to continue this case uh until an interpreter is there.
Next available date is up?
Yes.
Motion to continue agenda item forty seven to the next available date. Second.
Then move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number forty seven is continued to the next available date. Calling agenda item number forty eight.
Uh, likewise, this is the same licensee and uh request to continue to the next available date when a Korean interpreter is available.
Motion to continue agenda item forty eight to the next available date. Second.
Move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number forty eight is continued to the next available date. On agenda item number forty nine, Pro City Market.
Uh, likewise, uh same this is the same licensee who uh requests a continuance to the next available one interpreter.
Um, motion to continue agenda item forty nine to the next available date. Second.
Then move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number forty nine is continued to the next available. Calling agenda item number fifty, Lonnie Kai Brewing Company.
Hi, commissioners. Uh, I'm Steve Humshilt. Um, the CEO of Lonnie Kai Brewing Company. To my right is Al Darling, the CFO of Lonnie Kai Brewing Company.
Uh, do you waive reading of the charge?
We do.
How would you like to plead?
We would like to plead no contest.
Humshilt to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Then move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number fifty, no contest plea is accepted.
Uh, this is the first violation and I recommend a penalty of three hundred fifty dollars.
Sir, have your employees um been properly registered with the commission?
Yes.
And so everything has been corrected in this matter?
Um, yes, yeah. There were some extenuating circumstances that led to that that I'd like to yield to explain. This is the appropriate time.
Go ahead, sure.
Um, at at that time, about a year ago, we had just um swapped from a manufacturing license to a class eighteen small craft producer. And prior to that, we had a temporary license that allowed us to operate for ten days um before getting our formal license. During that time, we had sent employees down to try to get their cards, their blue or yellow cards. And since we didn't have our actual license in place, we weren't allowed to send employees through the training process to achieve the blue or the yellow card at that time. Uh, ironically though, our general manager was able to get a blue card, but it was attached to our original manufacturing license. So it was there's a lot of confusion going on. When we did get our license on September fifteenth or sixteenth, which was a Saturday, uh, we didn't have enough time to then get a hundred percent of our employees and staff through that process, you know, as we had planned before. And those days were the Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So those were the circumstan- there's so kind of we were we had some confusion and we weren't able to just procedurally execute and be able to get those out. Um, even though we had attempted to send employees down because we were missing our license number.
Is that is that after a reference application, do you know?
Yes, it's it's somewhat of a challenge. You you see this happens sometimes with uh temporary and transfers. Is that without a a license number, we can't issue a card. I don't know if the new LCIS uh system will be able to overcome that that slight disadvantage, but it it's just a a function of the process that without a a license uh number, which means uh the licenses have to have been approved and issued and picked up. We we can't start uh registering managers and employees to the system yet.
So was this violation issued during the timeframe of that ten days when you had a temporary license?
No, is the violation was issued after our formal license was in. But there there wasn't a procedure in place that we were made aware of or that we were able to learn that on when your license is approved, that you can open and operate on that particular day. Um, so we had operated under during the temporary license period that we were using that to not only train our employees um 'cause we were new into this particular facet of the business and a small craft producer, but also to be able to get them through the through the blue card or yellow card process. And then we learned that we weren't able to do that only during that process.
Uh, motion to issue a matter of reprimand. Second.
Then move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
Item five, agenda item number fifty, level recommended to be issued. Following agenda item number fifty one, Lonnie Kai Brewing Company.
Please introduce yourself for the record again.
Uh, Steve Humshilt, Lonnie Kai Brewing Company CEO. To my right is Al Darling, Lonnie Kai Brewing Company CFO.
Would you waive reading of the charge?
Uh, yes, but since we have a couple, which one if you can help like that maybe?
Okay, okay, okay. I go I'll go ahead and read it.
Okay.
Um, on or about April twenty seventh twenty eighteen at twenty two fifty three in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have the street and or primary entrances to the licensed premises unlocked during the time customers were on the premises in violation of in violation of rule three eighty four seventy two point two of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How would you like to plead?
Uh, again, we'd like to plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Then move the second all of them favor.
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number fifty one, the no contest plea is accepted.
Uh, this is the first violation. I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Sir?
Um, sure. So on on this day and at that time, um there we were we closed at ten P M and this the inspector came in and the report was ten fifty three. So at that time, we had um we you know, we have three front entry doors that are all street side. And at around ten P M, when our employees clock out, we have our last manager that's on duty. We allow our employees to be there um and you know, off the clock. So I guess they're patrons at that point. And they were sitting at the bar um while the employee while the manager was still clocked in, still actively and you know, not consuming, finishing up her duties. Um, again, there are three front doors, all street facing, so they're all three main doors for us. They're all legal ingress and egress um for building codes. So we the area that we have lit from the bar was still lit and well lit and the patrons were sitting there. The area that we were basically kind of closing down 'cause we just cleaned it, we had the lights dimmed and doors near there were locked. So we had one entrance that is a main entrance for us that was unlocked. And then we had two other entrances that kind of are better direct access to the main seating area that were locked.
Oh, let me just ask a question 'cause I'm a little confused.
Okay.
So you hid your employees after hours and allow them to drink in the small room, don't you?
Uh, uh, no, no, sir. It's it's one it's one large open space.
You're you're talking about a small area that you lock the door in, that you allow your employees? that you lock the door in, that you allow your employees, I'm not
Uh no, I'm
not catching on to something here?
Um yeah, sorry if I didn't say that clearly enough, we have uh we have, we have a almost an L shaped area.
Uh huh.
It's all open, there are no, there are, there's no hiding spots.
There are no
So the employees that were off the clocks and now considered patrons were at the bar in full view and full visibility and off the clock. So they were considered patrons, they weren't hiding or or anything.
This this violation is for um not having your the doors of your licensed premises unlocked during the time customers were on the premises. So that's a violation because it's a safety issue and it's because you need to have all doors that are on your floor plan unlocked during business hours.
Under understand.
I I understand what's, you know, that you guys wanna close up and you have a process, I used to work in bars and restaurants, but these are the rules, so you need to just come back.
Understood.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, second.
Then move in second, all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote uh agenda item number fifty one direction and fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number fifty two, Lonnie Kai Brewing.
Um my name is Steve Humshill, CEO of Lonnie Kai Brewing Company, to my right is Al Darling, CFO of Lonnie Kai Brewing Company. Um we we waived the reading, cause uh and
And you're
Uh we'd also like to plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please, second.
Then move in second, all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote uh agenda item number fifty two, no contest please is accepted.
Um, so here investigators found twelve ta- taps um on that weren't labeled um and so this is the first violation, I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
Um so uh we we utilize, we're very eco-friendly and efficient, we utilize digital display boards. So right, we do have twelve draft systems that's accurate and right in that area, we also have a digital display board that lists every single um item that is for sale, every beer that's for sale, it's A V D. Um it meets the required um ten ten foot distance at twenty twenty vision of the font size and height, it's actually larger than that. And we also have printed menus that are available on our counter um for people to be able to view as well.
So would you like to change your plea to not guilty?
Um, I I guess I don't understand specifically, I mean, I I I feel no contest is the most appropriate. Yeah.
Um, Ms. Lee, any response?
Um, I I I didn't see anything in the report about um the digital digital displays, so I I can't comment on that.
Can you, I wanna hear more detail about this digital display, is it on the the pool itself or is it right in front of the pool? Can you give me some?
It the layout?
Yes.
Sure, um so as you approach, as you're as you're you're consumer approaching the bar
Mm-hmm.
and then the the beer tender would be there directly behind the beer tenders, twelve draft lines as indicated, or twelve faucets that come out. Um up to the right of that is a digital display board, so it's basically a a TV screen and on that TV screen, it indicates every beer that's on there, the price and everything that's available, it's numbered um you know, one through twelve, so it's very clear and and so we've never had an issue where we've mistakenly served a a client uh the incorrect product that they ordered. We don't block those out, we make, you know, we make them available, we want people to, you know, we're craft breweries, we want people to go through and look at our products and decide for themselves, so they can go through the variety. So the digital display board um is basically a digital menu that's permanently fixed and mounted uh within the area of where the faucets are.
One question, is is the digital display board um capable of um ma- making changes in terms of the numbers one through twelve?
Um
Or is what's displayed on the hardware?
What's displayed, so the digital menu displayed, so when we do say we run out of a particular beer and we're gonna put a new beer on draft, so then we go ahead and make changes to what that new beer would be. Um so for for example, if draft number one had beer A and that beer keg kicks, we put on the new beer, we upload what the new beer that's on there, which happens as part of that process that we have. So the patron is always aware of what we have on draft, so they can choose, so it's not like a traditional menu where when you run out of beer and just like, no, that's eighty sixth. We kind of have a, it's it's live, but we manually enter into that process.
And so when you're doing the change, it's contemporaneous with the change of the actual beer that's served for the particular tap?
Uh one more time, please.
When you when you um change the tap to from beer A to beer B
Yeah.
The digital display board is not contemporaneous with that change?
Uh well, it's, we enter it, it's, it doesn't do it automatically, it's not A I, can't read it, so when we plug the new beer in, the first thing we're gonna do is run the old beer out of the lines while we're entering in the information into our system, which updates the digital display board.
You also mentioned some, I think I heard you say a printed menu on the counter.
That's correct.
Does that correspond to beer taps?
Yes.
And does that change?
That changes by printing.
Do you change the printout in front of the customers on the bar contemporaneous with the changing of the beer?
Um Yes, we have a printer within the bar and then we print them off and update that menu again.
Uh, motion to convene to executive session, second.
Then move in second, all those in favor.
Um
Hi.
Okay, we are now back on the official record, uh record, uh commissioners.
Um So my question is, was this display that you described earlier, was it up when the entire time that you folks have been in operation?
Yes.
It was, so it was up during the, on May fourth, two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Even extending prior to that to our temporary license.
Okay, um can I please have enforcement come up?
Let me just go ahead and swear a man. Do you swear that the testimony given today's here will be the truthful truth and not the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Acting supervising investigator's conference for enforcement. Yeah.
Um, Mr. Perez, can you give us some details um about this matter that occurred on May fourth, two thousand eighteen at Lonnie Kai Brewing Company?
When the investigators went in, there was, they weren't able to determine if there is any identification of each of those spigots. So they weren't able, they didn't see any of them. And
They didn't see the display, they weren't, it wasn't conspicuous.
Yes, and at that time, if there was, the licensee has more, has an opportunity to explain, but there is nothing given and my investigators didn't see any of it.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, and I would also like to refer to the statute, we write statute two eighty one dash seventy eight subsection B seven. Uh any drought beer, so that you shall not sell any drought beer unless upon the faucet, spigot or outlet wherefrom the beer is drawn, there is attached a clear and legible notice, placard or marker, which in English language indicates and declares the name or brand adopted by the manufacturer of the drought beer. So situated as to be clearly legible from a distance of at least ten feet from the spigot, faucet or outlet to a purchaser with normal vision. Okay, so you represented the second part visible from at least ten feet, but the first part clearly states that it needs to be on the faucet, spigot or outlet where from from the beer is drawn, so this is a violation. Um, seeing that, uh my motion is to re- uh approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, second.
Then move in second, all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote uh agenda item number fifty two, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda item number fifty three, request number one nine dash one four eight thirty five from L O C O C N. On behalf of the Babe's Bank with all
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we all see on behalf of Babe you. Um I do apologize for my client not being able to stay, he did have to go off to work. Um And so essentially I'm here because my my client is asking um the commission to reconsider the denial of the waiver of the five day rule for the standalone intent. We do understand he is quite well beyond that, I mean there is no question, we don't dispute that. Uh we also, you know, have every respect for the fact that this is well within the commission's discretion to uh grant or deny um this waiver request, however, we are just asking to maybe take a second look. Um and if there's anything that the licensee or the applicant can do uh in order to um make the commission more comfortable with issuing a standalone talent, we'd be willing to do that. Um So that's essentially uh the request being made today.
This um Oxiana. And in your in your um motion for reconsider, just out of curiosity, um you refer to us granting a similar request to another entity?
Yes, and at the time, so I apologize, at the time I drafted, I did not yet have the information related to that licensee. I was subsequent to filing that I was able to get the transcript. Um it was from the July twelfth, two thousand eighteen meeting. Uh agenda item number ten, which was a request on behalf of the Kuaicola Tavern. Um in that i- in that case, the prior license, I believe, had been expired for four years. Um and the waiver was granted to that licensee.
So that was on a July fourth hearing?
Yes, it was the week after um my client's request had been denied. I should have made copies, but I do have the relevant portion of the transcript from the hearing on July twelfth, if the commission would like to review um any of the comments.
Motion to convene to executive session to consider the request, second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Then move on, you know, in executive session.
My son needs an Xbox. I know.
I just go, mom, no.
Yeah.
Okay, we are now back on the official records, uh commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action?
Yes, uh my motion is to um deny request as for agenda item number fifty three.
Okay, remove the check and all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote uh agenda item number fifty two is denied, thank you.
Thank you.
Calling, uh can I have a motion to ratify agenda item number fifty four?
Uh, motion to ratify the administrative actions report to April two thousand eighteen, May two thousand eighteen, June two thousand eighteen and July two thousand eighteen, second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I vote uh agenda item number fifty four is uh ratified. Um agenda item number fifty five, move three dash eighty one dash seventeen dash four, delegation to the administrator of routine administrative duties and functions which do not require a hearing. Can I have a motion to approve that, please, it's already in effect.
So moved, second.
Then move in second, all of them favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh I vote I, agenda item number fifty five is approved to put the administrator, the delegation to the administration of meeting administrative duties and functions which do not require a hearing. Um agenda item number fifty six, do we have any administrative matters? I don't think we do, but before, I think yeah, well I'll, I have to put my two cents in on the video. So the video um
We know.
Yes.
We know how bad it is.
Yes, so hopefully we can um
Let me ask his question. Yes, it's good. Did we hire a vendor for that?
What what it involves is um basically uh upgrading the equipment that we need to buy. So once we get approval to make that expenditure, um that's not, we're not asking you, who internally, uh then it would be a question of ordering uh ordering that equipment and installing it.
Okay, great, so I would just like to request, when we do get the vendor, that he consider uh including the entire uh commission E S in the videos.
Which is
Look at the videos, it just focuses on who's
Who's talking.
talking and I'd like everybody to be exposed to the
But should we just
It's public scrutiny.
Oh, sure.
Uh no.
Thank you, thank you so much to the general public, as I as I say, no, what, what's what's going on here, you know?
Why don't we just squeeze into the point? And rub elbows.
We are still being videoed.
Now we are.
Yeah.
Now, before everyone leaves, if you could please sign the delegate